A quorum being met, we'll call the meeting to order please. Start the meeting by asking the town clerk to read the warrant.
Plymouth, to either constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 25th day of July next at 7:30 o'clock in the afternoon, and then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the town hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof feel not, and make due return of this warrant with your doing theron to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as Alpha said. Given our hands this 30th day of June in the year of the Lord 2016, Troy Garen, Tom Milias, Kim Roy, true copy attest, Thomas Hammon, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaynor. If you'd all please rise, and gentlemen, remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, as everyone should know, we do a lottery system in Halifax. All of these articles will be drawn by lottery by the town clerk. For anyone who wants to speak, kindly raise your hand, call out Mr. Moderator, and I will call on you when I get a chance to get to it. Everyone will need to address the moderator with any questions, comments, arguments, anything like that from the microphone that's in the middle of the floor. And can everyone hear me okay? Yes, good, alright. The first article will be Article Five. Article Five is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Can pass over? Yes, Mrs. Roy.
Okay. I move to pass over Article Five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to pass over Article Five. Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
We had been hopeful that we were able to actually ask for more money for the treatment of the ponds. There's a lot of mechanism in place, including getting approval from National Heritage for -- we have endangered mussels in the pond, so we need to ask for permission if we do a large dose of alum, and so that did not come in time in order to fund this.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends any debate on passing over Article Five being asked to take no action. Seeing no evidence, all those in favor of passing over Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article will be? Six. Okay, the next article's Article Six. Proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over Article Six.
We have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion in the second to pass over Article Six. Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
This is another thing that we had hoped that we could vote on at this evening's meeting. Unfortunately, it required an open space plan that did not get accomplished. We had a small window of time, but it's something that we will definitely bring forth to town meeting at the next one.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on passing over Article Six, being asked to take no action, seeing no evidence thereof? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article? Article Two, proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Milias.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see -- I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $9,722 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2017 between AFSCME, AFVL-CIO, Union Council Number 93, local 1,700 dispatchers, and the town of Halifax.
We have a motion in the second to transfer money to fund the provisions of a collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Milias, it's your article.
Quite simply put, this is the money article to obviously fund the contract that we negotiated with the dispatchers for the remaining portion of fiscal '17 until the move to Duxbury.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article Two? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of passing Article Two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next article is Article Three, proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Roy?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to create a new line item dispatcher services for fiscal year 2017 and all subsequent years to transfer all available appropriations from Line 70, communication center wages; Line 71, communication center clerical; Line 72, communication center expense of Line Four of the annual town meeting of May 9th, 2016.
We have a second? We have a motion in the second to create a new line item by transferring other line items. Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
The Board of Selectmen, along with the two chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief, started negotiations many months ago. We held a public forum about moving our dispatch center to Duxbury. That contract has been negotiated, and it has been signed by this board. This is really a technical move, this particular article, so that going forward, we have one line item that we pay the money to Duxbury to fulfill the contract.
Finance Committee's recommendation, Article Three.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article Three as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article is Article Four, which is proposed by the building -- the school committee, I'm sorry.
I move that the town of Halifax appropriate the amount of $140,000 from stabilization fund for the purpose of paying cost for feasibility study, schematic design for the repair and/or replacement of the roof, windows, and other structural elements at the Halifax Elementary School, 464 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town of Halifax may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Halifax School Building Committee. The town of Halifax acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the town of Halifax incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Halifax, and that the amount appropriated and authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement, and that may be executed between the town of Halifax and the MSBA.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to transfer money from the stabilization account into Article Four as stated. I'll ask you for your comments on the motion, but since this is a transfer from stabilization, it will require a two-thirds vote. We'll try to take care of that later. But it's your article, Mrs. Smalling, you want to tell us about it?
As many of us are aware, this building is -- as many of us are aware, this building is in need of a new or repaired roof, as it leaks and so forth. So, we have applied for a grant to help pay for this project, and this $140,000 is the beginning stages to hire the project manager and the architect to sort of get the project rolling. It is beginning stages.
Good, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Do we have any discussion on Article Four as proposed? Seeing no evidence thereof, again, this requires a two-thirds vote. I'll try to hear it. All those in favor of Article Four as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article. Next article is Article One, be proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $210,000 to be added to Line Number 54 fire wages of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 9th, 2016, for the total appropriation of $883,328, or take any action thereon.
We have a second? Yes, we have a motion in the second to raise and appropriate $210,000. Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
Yes, I would like to turn over the presentation to our fire chief, Jason Viveros.
I apologize for the acoustics in the room. If I'm not loud enough, please just ask me to speak up. The plan we're presenting tonight was something that I brought forward to the Fire Study Committee last August. The committee spent several months vetting that plan. It included two parts. The first part included restructuring our ambulance fees, and the second part was increasing staffing. In December, the Fire Study Committee voted to support the proposal, both proposals, and the restructuring of the ambulance fees was brought to the January town meeting and approved. Finally, I presented it to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, who also voted to support it. One of the main questions when the ambulance fees were restructured was how will this make the service better? And I hope that my goal tonight is to explain how we're going to make the service better if this is approved. So, I'd like to give you a little background on what we currently have. We have what our department is made up of. It's -- we have eight full-time firefighter paramedics who are assigned to 24-hour shifts. We have 20 on-call firefighters, 13 of which are EMTs. We have two firefighters on duty every day, 24/7. And when we have multiple calls, we use a callback system, and we use off-duty personnel to supplement our staff. We have a very young department. Our average full-time employee has roughly five and a half years on the Halifax Fire Department. We have 11 members of our department with less than three years of experience. Back in 1988, I believe, there was a generational shift in firefighting. We have six members of our department who began between 1973 and 1988, all of whom are firefighters and not EMTs. They're highly valued members of our department. As you can see, we lack experience, and they're definitely there to provide fire experience for our department. However, between 1988 and 2004, we have no one in those ranks. And the reason that I believe is that's when firefighting became more of a career, and we didn't -- most people didn't have the availability to respond back from home, or didn't work in town like had many years ago. And this isn't a problem that was specific to Halifax, it's actually a nationwide issue. There still are several fire departments in Massachusetts that run volunteer departments. Carver, for example, is one of them, where they have a heavy farm industry base where many of the firefighters can leave and respond to that. Swansea's another example of that. However, neither of those departments provide EMS service, and that accounts for roughly 80% of the calls that we respond to on a yearly basis. So, the problems that we have in the Halifax Fire Department, we don't meet the recommendations of the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, International Association of City Managers, International Association of Fire Chiefs. All of these organizations recommend four to five members per fire engine, a fire engine that's staffed with four to five members and able to respond. We don't meet that today, and we don't expect that we'll ever be able to meet that. We're a small community, and we know that that's probably not achievable for us. The stations, there are, I'm sorry, there are many EMS studies that have been done that show a substantial difference in patient outcome, depending on the crew size. Right now, we have two members who are going out in our ambulance, and that's pretty much what we can do. We can handle the first EMS call most of the time. There are times when we need three people on the ambulance if we're doing CPR, or if we have a serious trauma, sometimes we need four, but that's calling back off-duty personnel. Once that first ambulance is committed, we, right now, we rely pretty much entirely on our call personnel. And when we recall people for ambulance calls, we're adding roughly five minutes, five minutes to the response time. For fire calls, it's easy. People can leave their house, and no matter how they're dressed, or no matter what they were doing, and respond to a fire call, put out their fire gear, put on their fire gear, and they're ready to go to work. For EMS calls, it's not quite as easy. We have to show up at the patient's bedside in a somewhat presentable position, presentable appearance, and be able to take care of them, take them to the hospital. So, if someone, you know, our call firefighters are out cutting their grass, or they're working out on their car, it's not the same as when we expect them to come back for fire calls. I'm sure, you know, we don't want someone who's coming dirty showing up for our EMS call. So, sometimes, they're not available, and that leads me to the next point, is that they're occasionally unpredictable. So, we know that they add five minutes, and the reason for that is that they're coming in from home. So, I used an example of Elm Street. If the call was on Elm Street, and someone lived on Elm Street, they still have to respond from their house, to the fire station, and then back out there. So, it can easily add five minutes to the call. And that five, that increase in response time is important, especially on EMS calls. We look at the American Heart Association statistics, and we know that the chance, the survivability rate, for example, in cardiac arrest decreases by 10% every minute. So, if we look, we generally have a three-minute, a one-minute call-taking time, a one-minute turnout time, which is the time it takes the firefighters to get out the truck and head out the door, and a three-to-five-minute response time. So, even in the best-case scenario, when a fire station is fully staffed, we probably have a 60% chance of making a significant difference in a cardiac arrest. When we're relying on off-duty personnel to do that, statistically, we have almost no chance of making that, making a difference in the extreme case of cardiac arrest. The call staff are wonderful, they provide a great service, however, sometimes they're unpredictable. We don't know when we have a second medical come in, if we're going to have one person come in, or if we're going to have 10 people come in. And there's a delay in a minute or so, waiting to see how many off-duty personnel sign on before we call for a mutual aid ambulance. And when we call for a mutual aid ambulance, we're tacking on somewhere between five and 10 minutes. I can speak on a call recently that happened, where we have people who show up at the fire station almost on a weekly basis with medical emergencies that range a whole host of things, from a lacerated finger. We've had overdose patients who are not breathing dropped on our front doorstep. Last week is, about two weeks ago now, is a prime example, where we had a medical emergency presented to the fire station. The fire station was not staffed. We had to wait for a mutual aid ambulance to come from an outside town, and that person sat at the Halifax Fire Station for almost 15 minutes before they were able to have some type of care. And that, to me, was not, is not acceptable. And finally, we're increasingly dependent on our mutual aid system. In 2015, we had 59 mutual aid requests and 46 transports by mutual aid ambulances, and we're hoping with this staffing plan, we'll be able to significantly reduce that number. We talked earlier about ambulance revenues. I think that there's going to be a large percentage of those that will, those calls that we'll be able to handle ourselves, and that ambulance bill, that ambulance revenue will come back into the town, and more importantly, the patient gets a much better level of The staffing issues have existed for a long time. What I put up here is just quotes out of the town report since 2007, given by my predecessors. We've all known that there's a staffing issue. The main issue came in how to take care of it, and how to fund, how to fund it without affecting the tax rate. We know the residents here have a tax burden, and we wanted to figure out a way to do that without increasing that burden. And I hope that's what we're able to show you tonight. Why do we need it? Our call volume has increased pretty significantly. The chart that I put up here shows from 2006. In 2006 is when the Halifax Fire Department went full-time. We've seen a 41% increase in our call volume, and some of the factors that we, I expect that that's going to continue to increase. And one of the big factors that attributes to that is we have an aging population. When we look at 2010, our 2010 census, our population now is four years older, and as the population continues to age, the need for EMS is going to continue to increase. The next slide shows what the average town pays for per capita fire protection, and this was important to the Fire Study, one of the things that the Fire Study Committee wanted to vet out. We compare ourselves to seven towns, and we went above, and we got roughly 15 towns, I believe, to show what percentage of the tax, or taxes go towards fire protection. Halifax is very low. If you want to point to it, Seamus, where we are today, we're roughly fifth from the left, it's in yellow, where we are today, and I struggle to see that actually, it's $117 per capita, and with our proposed staffing plan, that would change to $168 per capita. Now, what I want you to, what we're going to show in a few minutes, is that that money was generated from our increase in ambulance staffing. The plan we're going to, we're presenting tonight will not affect the tax rate. We changed the ambulance rates back in January. We, I've met with the town accountant, the Finance Committee, the town accountant has actually spoken to the state, and they're certified that the money we have, the money that we project will be, or has been increased, will be enough to cover the plan that we're The next slide shows the population compared to the amount of firefighters we have on duty. Halifax was by far the worst in this category. We have, just for comparison purposes, we have one firefighter on duty per 3,950 residents. You know, we're by far the worst. Other communities such as Plimpton and Kingston, they have one per 15, roughly one per 1,500 or 1,700 residents. And with this new plan, will be one firefighter on duty per 2,633 residents, which moves us towards the middle of the pack. Still by far not the greatest, but moves us towards the middle of the pack. We looked at incidents and how they occur, and this graph shows incidents by time of day, day of, whether it's what hour of the day, what day of the week. As you can see from the graph, most of our incidents occur between 7:00 AM and, 7:00 to 8:00 AM, and roughly 6:00 to 7:00 PM. That's the greatest number of incidents, and they're pretty consistent, Monday through Friday. At nighttime, the calls dramatically drop off, although they still exist, and when they do exist, they require the same amount of manpower. So, it's another fact, what played a factor in how we designed the plan that we're presenting What we're proposing is two full-time day positions, part-time night coverage, and recall. What recall is, right now, when the station's empty, up until a couple of weeks ago, we were not recalling any personnel. And what recall is, is when the station is empty, we utilize our call staff, and we call and have two of them come in, and stand by and man that second ambulance for two hours. So, part of that plan would include that. We've been experimenting it, it's worked fairly well, but now that we'll have three full-time people on during the day, we'll be able to get that ambulance out the door for the second medical much more frequently. We think with that, we'll see a significant reduction in the response times. The way we would assign our staffing is two full-time day positions, so they would work four days, four days on, four days off, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And like I said in the prior slide, that's when we see the greatest, our highest number of calls. So, we'd have experienced firefighter paramedics on those shifts, and be able to respond to those number of calls. The other thing, the other benefit is that we have, one, when the ambulance goes out now, it would be going out with two people, and we'd have an officer who would also respond separately. Once the ambulance goes to the hospital, that officer would come back, man the station, and we'd always have a captain or lieutenant available in town if a second emergency arises. We'd recall back one off-duty firefighter to supplement that, and if we have a second emergency, they would be able to immediately respond from the station and significantly reduce that response time. The second aspect of it was providing part-time coverage. We feel it's important to cover both the day and night, and do it in the most economical fashion. So, what we proposed was using part-time staff to cover the nighttime hours between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This schedule would do a couple of different things. One, it would give an incentive for our part-time people to come in more. As they come, have more off-duty responses, they would have the first pick at a night shift, so they have some time, some type of incentive there to come back more frequently. But more importantly, it would continue to engage them, they would be better trained, have more access to our equipment, be working our equipment much more frequently, and create a better part-time or call employee. So, what, how the cost breakdown? The full-time day coverage is $118,498.80, and that, that covers the training, all additional, all costs associated with those full-time positions. The nighttime coverage is $89,489.76, for a total of $208,348.56. So, some of the benefits to this plan, we feel it will fill the major gaps that we have right now with fire and EMS coverage. Certainly, we'll never meet the national standards, but it will bring us that much closer. Earlier tonight, we talked a little bit about the Duxbury dispatch taking over, and there will be somewhat of a transition of having a full-time person in the police station. Now, at least, we will have one at the fire station much more frequently. We see by far more emergencies, emergency calls at the fire station than we do the police station, and we want to be able to respond to them and provide care. It will help, it will make the firefighters safer. We have, there's national standards that address two-in and two-out policies, where if we have two firefighters go into our house, we have two standing outside. That can't happen when we only have two firefighters responding on a truck. During the day, I'll tell you that it'll happen much more frequently. I'm around during the day, and that when we show up, we will have enough people on the fire ground to go in and make an attack. It'll be safer for our firefighters. I can stress these standards all day long, but I can tell you that when, when there's an emergency, and there's a house fire, no matter what policy I have, our firefighters are going to go in, and they're going to try to make a rescue, and they're going to try to save someone, whether or not I tell them it's not a good idea, or it doesn't meet a national standard, and I want to make them a little safer and give them the tools they need to do that safely, make sure they go home at night safely every night. It will help us to address some of the administrative functions. We have a very weak fire prevention program. One of the less exciting aspects of firefighting is fire prevention, but it's really where we save a lot of lives. When we get into businesses, and we do our inspections, and we make sure they have operating detectors, and operating sprinkler systems is essential, and we struggle with that. And by having one additional person, when that ambulance, that ambulance right now is out two to four, two to four times a day going to the hospital, and they're, they're out of town for roughly, each time is two hours, so eight hours of a day, they could be gone at the hospital. There's no time to have staff addressing those administrative-type functions, and we think that with this new staffing plan, we will be able to address those functions. And finally, we, I feel it will help to engage our call staff. It's important, we're always going to need a call department, we're always going to need on-call, well-trained on-call firefighters. I think this will, as we, like I said, newer, young, the newer generation of call firefighters, most of them want to someday become career firefighters. And by creating an, an -- And by creating an incentive program for them, keeping them engaged is very, very So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions people might have.
Thank you, Chief. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article One?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article One as proposed? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article One as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. I would take a motion from the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to dissolve this Town Meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming.